Did anyone know? Evening.
Hey, we've started the meeting and whatever it's called, how to order.
Yep.
All right, let's touch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. And this is all the political. My favorite part.
Yeah. All right.
Well, thank you. Well, you have a great meeting.
Thank you.
I'll shut it down and you would leave the laptop over there.
Probably do a roll call. Let's go ahead and do that anyway.
Donald Harris, present.
Elizabeth, present.
Meg Quinn, present.
Matt?
Matt?
Matt's present.
You can't hear us?
Now I can.
Okay.
We just had to get Jake's big go.
So Maya's not here yet. We'll, we'll, right now we're Mark Rafferty, she may come next year. Okay. All right, so, uh, next thing is approval of the agenda, um, which we just have three items. Review the comprehensive plan, um, input that I sent, the committee charter, and that Lori sent, plus I had some, I have an, a, a marked up copy. And then, and I sent that to you, Matt, via email. And then the, some employee survey action items. So does we, does everybody approve? Anybody is, are, are we in favor of approving the agenda? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, all right. All right, so let's start with the economic, I mean, with the workforce housing committee input. So there was two sheets and I really didn't, we have plenty of time, so I just took a stab at the first sheet because I kind of got stuck on the second one. But, um, anyway, um, this was the template that was provided by the comprehensive plan committee. And they are going to incorporate input from all the committees into the overall comprehensive plan. So, um, so this is their standard template. So I just went through and took a stab at it. And so we'll just kind of start at the top. So our key topics are housing for local workforce and funding the, and development of the housing. Is there any other key topics that we think that pretty much cover?
I'd say that is.
Anything else you guys can think of?
Do we want to, uh, have something in there about, um, regulations or root, or rules concerning housing or development?
Okay. So like the governance, housing govern, yeah, workforce housing governance, maybe would that be, that kind of cover it? Okay. That's a good point. Okay?
Well, and also I'm thinking broadly, a little bit more broadly about like land use regulations or, or, so it's, it's not just like the rules surrounding the housing that we provide, but I think we would also potentially be charged with, um, having some input on the rules that govern land use.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I don't quite understand what you mean, but that's okay.
So for example, uh, and I, forgive me, I'm, I'm approaching this a little bit from like the way an economist thinks about it from the, uh, uh, the, uh, the broader country and the problem with, with, uh, limited housing. But there's a lot of evidence that land use regulation is a big part of the problem. So for example, both the Harris campaign and the Trump campaign are talking about, uh, trying to, uh, eliminate local housing, lo- local land use regulations to permit, uh, modern law quarters to permit more multi.
Anti-Nimbyism efforts.
Exactly. Or you call it Yim- Yimbyism that they'll call it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Basically making it harder to say, hey, you can't build that there. That if, if, if you have a thousand percent more dirt that you can say, yes, we'll build housing on that, you're necessarily going to see more housing built, so.
Right, okay. All right, I understand now. So, so I, so I said workforce housing governance and then somehow we want to tie that because I do think that should be a dot point about just the governance of the housing itself, but then the land use regulations.
The land use regulation, and, and I, I'm not trying to disagree with Matt, I'm just open for discussion. Um, we have been modifying a lot of planning and zoning ordinances recently to make it easier to plot townhomes, specifically to this end. So it's not that this board would have oversight over planning and zoning, there already is a planning and zoning commission. Um, but for instance, one of the things we're considering that would impact, may, maybe a better way to say it is to interface with the planning and zoning committee for, uh, encouraging land use development.
Okay.
Um, what, what I was gonna say is, planning and zoning has approached me, uh, about, there's a developer who's interested in, we have a piece of dirt that is zoned R20. If they were to give us a certain percentage of workforce housing on their development, would we consider giving them a density bonus because of it? So instead of an R20, maybe an R25 or an R30 or something along those lines. So I, I think that interface.
I'll put that interface, um, with, so it's, it is a key topic, interface with P and Z on land use regulation. Somehow we'll word that to where it makes sense in the, okay. Okay.
What about the infrastructure, keeping up the, what we're gonna need in that, thinking in the future for infrastructure? Like electrical, water.
There is a section here, I don't know if it was on this one or if it's on the next one, that talks about the other, other, um, committees that you, uh,
Interface.
Interface with, but I'll put that, that, I'll, I'll make a note about infrastructure and we'll see where it actually fits because it may fit, it may fit here, the.
I, I would say that infrastructure is necessarily a part of developing workforce housing committees. You gotta have the infrastructure, but the housing, that's why all the lots we've looked at have been on or near village infrastructure because we're not trying to build, you know, workforce housing that needs septic system, like nope, we want to bet up to the city sewer and do it right.
Right, okay. Okay, so then the next, um, uh, section is around previous accomplishments. And so I just took a little stab, somehow I thought I had the month on here, but I don't know if it needed. It wasn't on the template, but, um, I just put that the workforce housing committee was established and the employer employee surveys were developed. And we put governance established. And, um, and then also that the, the village of Angel Fire purchased the property behind Zeb's to develop. And so they kind of, they do want a dollar amount, that's why I have that 2BD filled out, that to, you know, whatever it was. So if we had a do- a dollar amount to put there, we can fill that in.
So, um, dollar amount we're projecting because this is, it's based on how many units we can fit on site.
Well, this is just purchasing the property itself.
Purchase, purchasing the property was about 250,000.
Okay.
We think we're gonna have about another half a million dollars of infrastructure, roads, fencing, engineering work. So, and that's gonna be the villages portion that we anticipate spending at least another half a million dollars.
Okay.
And then financing the housing stock itself.
Okay, well, that number is just for previous accomplishments, so we'll, I think there'll be another section that has the goal and the dollars.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so then, then we have this.
Can get your plan once you're looking for grant money? Working with a grant writer.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Planning to state federal grants.
Planning to state, yeah, okay. Well, it is.
It is, it is our recommendation, even though Rocky is the one doing all of the actual grant writing work.
I mean, we'll take some credit for it.
I mean, that's a big part of this.
Yeah.
If you don't have the money.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so then, next section is, this is, um, under this key topic. Um, so the housing for the local workforce was one of the key, is like these key topics tied to the sections here. So, um, I just kind of filled in stuff. I said, you know, the primary challenge is, is availability. There's limited inventory and limited inventory for affordable housing and limited long-term rental, you know, due to short-term rental. And then the implications, employees and contractors continue to commute from surrounding areas. They may seek employment closer to home to avoid the commute, and then the lack of available workforce. Um, it's a challenge, um, to support local businesses which hinders our growth.
It, it, it also, the add-on effect is, um, one of the benefits of getting more of our workforce to live in town. It is going to improve our median income metrics, which will help improve our grant writing opportunities.
So that's, that's a, a benefit. Let me see where that's, okay. Um, and so this is like, um, I'm, I'm just gonna say impacts median, median income right now is the implication.
Correct.
Okay.
So what phase is the, the contractor's going to be available for workforce housing? Definitely not the first phase.
It, it, well, we're gonna know that in the next couple of weeks. Um, the numbers I've heard so far, and, and we'll talk about this more on item C. We think we have about 15 employees right now for the village Angel Fire that live outside that would take advantage and another 12 open positions to hire. So we're up to 27 or so units that we think we could fill quite quickly. But we don't have a total count of how many can we fit on that four and a quarter acre, but that's the next thing.
Yep, so, yeah, we'll come back to that. Okay, and then in terms of this, this primary challenge about the availability, the recommended actions were identify the workforce housing needs, which we are working on. Encourage promote local property owners to offer more term rental opportunities, that is, that is an action that we can do. And develop more local housing that is restricted to workforce renters slash owners, so.
Yeah, he, he, and I would add to that, either built and operated by the village Angel Fire or in partnership with a future developer.
Okay. Okay, I'll put that in here, I've read it fine.
Because you guys are met at least one, there will probably be another developer that will at some point approach the committee, so that interfacing with developers will also need to be, yes, there.
Okay. All right, and then the second, uh, piece was that afforded, but under, uh, housing for local workforce affordability. Angel Fire, my, and I said that Angel Fire is primarily a second home retirement market. Local building costs are higher than in urban areas. And then, so we can put other things there too if we want. And I'll say some employees and contractors will not be able to purchase or rent local housing that is currently available. And employees and contractors will continue to seek houseware, housing elsewhere. So, um, is there anything we want to put, again, under affordable, affordability of the housing? Um, we, we could also put something about the rents are high here because that is true.
There's lack of supply.
Yeah, lack of supply.
I got a nod out of Matt on that, I'm gonna pat myself on the back.
I'll say lack of supply drives.
That was homework.
Yeah.
That was McGee.
Lack of the home, lack of supply drives the rentals.
Oh, yeah.
What about resort fees?
Room, rentals, uh. Yeah. What would that be like a lo-, so there are some local, I mean, we could say resort fees, but.
Membership fees.
Yeah, we can, I'm, yeah, I know what you're saying. I'm just saying there's some like, some unique local characteristics or whatever. That big one then.
We're, we're, we're a high alpine environment. We have a con- we have a constricted building season.
Uh huh.
Um, you know, there's really only eight or nine months that you're gonna build up here.
Right.
There is an existing low-income housing in town, but due to how it's set up and regulated, they never turn over.
Right.
So there's never, it, it was a good idea, we, we're trying to use that as an example of, hey, don't do that in the same dead end. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then as far as the at recommended actions was develop more affordable housing specific for workforce, um, maybe I say work, workforce, um, renters and, um, and then seek grants to develop and or buy down the cost of development to allow for lower rent.
The, the other big one is, is additional housing means the village could actually get to full employment. Because right now, we, as I said, we have 12 positions we would hire for and cannot.
Okay. Um, so that, well, that would be a benefit.
Yes.
I'll, I'll figure out how to put that in here. I could say something about that, one of the challenges is that it, the implications is we may not reach full employment, may not be able to fill positions.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And which positions, firefighters, so. I mean, that's like.
The key positions, yeah. Okay, all right, and then the second piece, the second little section was the funding and the development of housing. Um, so this, this is where that, um, the MFA grant thing was right here. But anyway, so I've got previous accomplishments or Colfax County adopted an MFA affordable pleasant planning, housing planning ordinance, so that was one. And then the village of Angel Fire is finalizing the approved ordinance, but that is now done. So this is completed, right?
It has gone after public notice because it is a new ordinance, there's a certain, it's, it's in House news right now.
Okay.
So it won't be finalized until that public notice is completed. But it has gone through legal review, it's been approved by council, it is just waiting on the slow wheels of government to grind through.
So I'll just leave it as ending, final review.
Yep.
And then the, the village of Angel Fire purchased property behind Zeb's. And that was, did I put that up there?
Yes.
I have that in both places. So maybe, I mean, it isn't, isn't, I don't know, we'll figure out which of it needs to go both. I mean, it's applicable to both. And then the village of Angel Fire has applied for MFA grant fees for developing housing for local workforce, 2.7 million, is what I understand is what's available.
There's a total of 2.7 million in the grant. We've applied for every dollar they'll get us.
Yeah.
But we anticipate the total cost of the phase one project being closer to $8 million.
Okay. All right, so that's what we applied for.
Yep.
Okay, so then, the challenges and existing conditions. And so one of the challenges I have is private development, developers want access to New Mexico housing grants. And the local median income is too high for some grants. That's, we're, that's for private, that's the challenge of the private developers getting involved.
Well, n- that's, so the, the, the median income is a challenge for the village of Angel Fire.
Okay.
For all grant writing activity. So every grant we apply for, whether it's an infrastructure grant or a housing grant or a fire adaptive grant, they always ask two questions first. What's your median income and how much cash do you have on hand? Because what they, they don't want to give, you know, villages or municipalities that don't need the money, they're not trying to give you more money. So we, because most of our workforce lives outside of the village of Angel Fire, have a very high median income.
Sure.
Um, and not a problem for you guys, but we also have too much cash on hand. So we are trying to spend our cash down, bring more of our workforce in to make us a more attractive landing place for all grants, state and federal.
So what other challenges do we think, um, the private developers have? I mean, they have.
Private, private developers are gonna have, um.
Getting employed.
It, it depends on the, their, their first challenge is gonna be the short building season. Um, for a large project, there's not enough contracting capacity in town right now to build 100-unit apartment complex.
Right.
It doesn't exist. Um, so, so, so protracted season, lack of, uh, contracting capacity to actually build the process. And they need to be able to work with us to apply for grants to get their blend of product right.
Right.
Okay, so they need us to have a robust workforce housing process that they can piggyback on at the state and federal level to do a large-scale development. And that's many of the things that you've already worked on, they're not done, done yet, but we're all hoping that our first workforce housing project out of the gate will spur one of the two or three developers into motion to go, okay, we did this, how can we help you do a bigger version of this? Because, I mean, if we have to do phase two, three, and four, we will, but I'd quite frankly rather a private developer did it. Because, you know, if, if you're building a 150-unit townhome complex, your cost per unit is gonna scale down much better than anything we can do at, you know, 30 units of whack.
Right. Okay, so I'll move the local median one under the, the village of Angel Fire. So the implications have not addressed. Um, developers may seek other markets if they can't access the MFA housing grants. And then, of course, they, they, if they can't, if they can't staff, they can't build, right?
Right. And, and the same way, not, not only the building side, but also keep in mind the managing side.
Sure.
S- some of these folks are gonna use existing property managers, some of them want to come in and be owner operators and there's just not enough people up here to
Right.
manage, clean the units, lawn care, or whatever else.
Right, okay. And then just the recommended, recommended actions were work with the developer, can access additional grants or tax breaks. The village to adopt an MFA approved ordinance to give access to housing grants, which we've already done. Village to kick in funds after MFA ordinance is adopted, avoiding anti-donation clauses, it's kick in to the developer.
Correct, so you had, the reason you had to have it at the county and municipal level is it allows us to get around the anti-donation clause. So if we find a developer that wants to build, we can help get the utilities and things onto their property legally via this MFA route map.
And I'm gonna add, get more workers to live here. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay, so then, then under the village of Angel Fire, the other, uh, primary challenge would be the village of Angel Fire to develop workforce housing, limited funds, limited access to grants because of that, and then I'll move this median income and cash on hand. Yeah. And I don't know what else we want to say, is a challenge for the village on that?
I mean, well, we are still, um, we're, we're looking at a manufactured unit at this point. We haven't settled on one, there's still review process ongoing there. Um, we still have some technical hurdles to figure out about the mix of units. How many three bedrooms, how many two bedrooms, how many one bedrooms? I would say our biggest single challenge in the, is we have not found an affordable one-bedroom. That, that is still something we are in need of and may or may not happen. There just may not be something that will scale down that small. I, I had, um, we reviewed another vendor, uh, if you remember, we went out to look at the tiny homes out on the RV resort. Um, uh, sustainability partners, did an interview with them. They built a nice unit, they're all 300 to 400 square feet, but they all come with a 15 to $20,000 delivery price tag.
Wow.
So.
So I've seen on, just not to get, I don't want to get off tilt, tilt here because we're trying to work on these. But I've seen on Amazon, you can order like houses that literally unfold.
Yeah.
You know, like, and I wonder what those, you know, for temporary.
Yeah.
That might be okay, but who knows how much those are, you know?
I would be very leery with our snow loads in winter up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Style house through winter.
Yeah. Little metal building, okay.
What about the A-frame, when you said you knew somebody?
I'm still working on that.
I've seen that people build themselves.
Yeah, yeah, the product he was talking about, he said he'd stayed in it, it's relatively decent sized, even considering the law, you can only, you know, claim X per foot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So then, the, what is it called, the implications have not addressed, um, I just said amount of housing to be developed with limited scope due to funds availability for one. Your other?
Uh, I make sure I understand the question right. If we don't do this, is that what comprehensive plan is asking?
Right, if we don't, we do not, if the village of Angel Fire does not participate in the development of workforce housing.
Well, the, the, if we don't do it, the first thing is our workforce problems all stay active over there. That's the biggest.
Stay the same. Status quo.
Or to your point, Lloyd's point, get worse as, as, as one trades guy retires out, does he get replaced by?
Exactly.
Right.
Um, same way with our road grader operators and all the other village employees. Uh, we also won't be able to likely hire, build those 12 empty positions.
I'll just say sustainability. Yeah, okay. And then, um, so just some of the, um.
Oh, the, the other thing I might say here is, given where we are real estate-wise, the longer we wait to address this, the more expensive it's gonna be. If, if, if council at some point were to change its mind and say, no, we want to do workforce housing, we're gonna wait 10 years to do it? Okay, but in 10 years, that housing is all gonna cost X percent more.
It'd be, right. Okay. All right, and then in terms of the, uh, what did it say, recommendations? One, what, the, these things I filled in earmark funds and capital budget for workforce housing. Seek grants from several sources to develop housing, MFA federal funds, et cetera, and tap into private development where it makes sense.
The other thing that was done, and I'm not sure if we're gonna put this, remember, um, the mayor pushed for, and we subsequently, when we changed our permitting fee structure, we went from $600 on a single-family home to a thousand, and so we're getting an extra $400 that is going into the workforce housing fund for every single-family permit that goes through.
I'm gonna put that up here, this like the building permit as something that was accomplished.
A revenue source for workforce housing fund.
Okay. So the way this, this, this document is structured is any key topic that we have, we need to have a table for. So we've added governance and land use regulations as a third. I think we decided that the infrastructure was um, under the funding and development, maybe, or, um, one of the other key topics. So if we have workforce housing governance as a, if we, if we put that as a third box, then I would say, or if we talk about the primary challenges and existing conditions, is there, um, one of the primary challenges, I think, in terms of the governance is, I don't know. One thing is like if we don't have the governance in place, then every vacationer that comes here is gonna want to live in one of these little, wanna rent one of these units. So I don't know how we say that, but.
Well, and, and it, it ensures the long-term viability of the units themselves, that they're maintained, that they're rented to, the people they're targeted for, um, that the site is, you know, set up to be a welcoming place to families and not just a row of rental units.
Also, okay, long-term, um, maintenance. And then, um, and then there always is gonna be a challenges, there's always gonna be challenges to the governance, wanting exceptions, you know?
Right.
Which I worry, I was thinking about that on the way here, it's like, I hope there's no employee out there that, you know, that says, well, I'll just rent one of those for you guys for the summer, y'all can be here in the summer. Yeah. As a, as their family or, you know, their retired parents or.
And that's what the whole point of the governance and then having releases written up under that.
Right. Right.
Not saying people want to do it.
Right, right.
But we'll have recourse.
Right.
And, and some of these are implications. I mean, I can take another stab at that. I mean, this is not gonna be a finished document by the end of this meeting, but I can take another stab and we can review the additional changes. But some of the implications I would be is if we don't have governments, if we don't have governments, then it's a free-for-all.
Yep.
You know? And then, um, uh, and then I think that, you know, if we, also if we don't have governments, we don't, if we don't tie these units that we're developing to be specific to workforce, then they will bleed out into eventually becoming short-term rentals and all that, you know? We have to, we have to keep that, um, the, the, the scope creep or whatever is kind of what I'm trying to say. And then, so our goals would be, I don't know, find a regular, find a property manager who will, I'd say, property, effective property management. Um, and a robust application process or whatever. And vetting, application sets vetting, and then maybe also, um, what do I want to say about the, we remember how in our governance, we talked about, we will, the periodic review of eligibility, maybe that's what I want to say, okay? Okay.
So you brought up that nobody ever moves out of these workforce. We don't have anything in our governance that says they can only live there for so long.
No, they do have to be employed somewhere.
They have to.
And see what's happened across the street over here is they got, they, they got in.
Okay.
Qualified, and then they never leave.
Okay.
Their kids are now living there under their.
Right, because that's a, that's affordable housing.
Yeah, that's affordable.
Correct.
It's not workforce, right?
Government.
This, this is the subsidized housing.
Yeah.
Um, and that's unfortunately how it goes, is once somebody gets in, they've got over to that first bar, there is no way to come say, hey, you've been retired for 10 years and you're still living in a workforce housing unit. In our governance document, that's definitely.
Okay. Okay, so why don't we, I think that was a pretty good review of this, we'll do like a second stab in it. In some future, we can either like, we had recommended give some feedback through email and then come back to this topic and in a, in a future session, like I said, it's not due for a while, and then plus we have the other documents to do too, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's plenty of time on that. Okay, so then we have, you have copies of Lori's, um, original.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, right here, okay. Okay, so, so the next thing on the agenda is to look at the committee charter, so Lori had taken a stab.
Should be the back one, I don't know if they've. Should be the back one. I don't know if they've moved it yet.
Lori had taken a stab at the the committee charter and, and actually put it into the categories of the the template. And so then I went through and I made some recommended, recommended changes, but by no means are they permanent changes. So, we can just maybe go, let's start with the first paragraph of the mission statement, and we can discuss that, and then the changes are the ones that I sent that's got the red line, you know? Okay, so, Lori, do you want to take us through that first paragraph or just kind of basically see what you're?
I was just looking at yours. I don't, no, I, I don't.
Okay, I'll, I have to do that.
Well, maybe keep in mind, because I think this is my second or third committee to start working on these. These, these are great documents, but don't overthink this. This is a very, very basic outline of, of tasks.
Right. So, so what I, the changes that I had, so the thing that I had changed on the mission statement is, I think on, yours had been the word facilitate the development of, and, and that's fine, but I was really, I went, and I kind of mentioned this before, I was really thinking about our role of, of the committee is to support the village in facilitating that development. So, I changed it to support. And then.
I was just thinking investigate.
Okay.
Explore, something like that.
Okay, I like the words explore. That's a good idea.
That's kind of what we're, we're exploring options.
Okay, well, let's change it to explore.
Explore and support.
Okay, that sounds good.
I think that brings what we're doing together.
Looking at it and we're providing.
Providing the framework.
Right, okay. That sounds good. And then, then I didn't know, I just said we were collaborating with the village council, but if you want to leave the part about the local government, nonprofit organizations and developers, I just felt like the the council has more of the responsibility, council and the village employees have more responsibilities working with the developers and the, and the nonprofits, whereas, you know.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Most of what this committee is doing is interfacing with council at work sessions to make sure we're all driving the boat in the same direction.
So, that's what I was thinking, the only, really the only, I mean, we might have here people come and talk, but we're not gonna then say, oh, well, let's start working on something together. We're just maybe just making the recommendations. Yeah, okay. And then, the only thing that I was, and I am open to whatever, I was really concerned about including the the worrying about innovative, affordable, environmentally friendly, and ensuring the natural beauty of our region is preserved. I normally, I don't know if that would be part of a mission statement, or if that's kind of a little overreaching, or, I don't know. But I'm, you know, also, what are you, Matt, what are you thinking? I'm seeing.
Yeah, I do kind of feel like it seems a little bit far afield, like that's more of a, I don't know, that's a little bit beyond our remit, I think.
They're definitely things we desire. Yeah. We'll try for, but this is like, okay, we're trying to focus in.
I think there's a difference between prioritizing longevity and the aesthetic look of the neighborhood, and, you know, we're not gonna ask you guys to be residential design experts. That's not.
Right.
You know, you're, you're being asked to call balls and strikes and make recommendations, not develop everything from the ground up, so.
But a word you just said there, I think, is important, because we need this to be long, long, we have some longevity and it needs to be sustainable, so we probably need to add some wording in that mission statement around sustainability of workforce housing. Because that is a mission. We don't want to just develop it one time and then, you know.
Yeah.
We can forget it. Say, the committee will work to provide long-term, sustainable workforce housing options. Okay.
Now, I, I suspect at some point, and this is my guess, but at some point, we're hypothetically going to have to pick the exterior colors of some housing here, right? Like, you guys are gonna weigh in on that, because you're all on this committee. Ultimately, council will take the final decision, but council tends to weight committee recommendations quite heavily.
Okay. So, one thing I will say is, on the way to Kevin going to his mesa, he, he noticed that there was some new housing development in Mascaro of all places.
Okay.
He took a picture. I want to share it. We don't want our housing to look like. It looks horrible.
Hey, what not to do sometimes.
Yeah, no, that is, that's key. That is key.
So, I will, you know, they put in a, I mean, it looks horrible, but anyway. Okay. So, then, the next paragraph, where you say there's a shortage of long-term and home ownership opportunities in the village. I, I wanted to take out the part about low to moderate income and just leave it very, it's just, it's just workforce employers and contractors. Because we, the mission is not to develop affordable housing, it's to develop workforce housing.
Right.
I know that affordability is a component of it, but I wanted to.
It is, but wait, if, and I'll tell you, if you leave low in there, council is immediately gonna start thinking across the street.
Yeah, I mean, I wrote this like the first month we.
Sure, sure. Lori, this is a great thing to write.
Yeah, I mean, like I. Affordable.
Right, sure.
Well, and, and again, there are affordability requirements in all of the grants that we're applying for. It's not that affordability is not a component, but once you start saying low and subsidized housing, you necessarily flip over to a different end goal than what we're aiming at.
And then, the next sentence, I just thought we just, you know, if we wanted to say the issue has limits our ability to retain local staff or businesses, we could, you know, you had put down the community crisis of ending, eroding our quality of life. I'm happy to leave that in there. People feel like we need to leave that in there, or what do you, what do you guys think? Or we just want to keep it pretty generic, or? I do under, I do get exactly what you mean by eroding, because, yeah, it's, it's, you know, sometimes you go to these restaurants, they have one waiter to, to do fifteen tables.
Yeah.
And, you know?
It's not their fault. They're just.
They're just, and I don't want to go to work for them, I mean, you know, so, but anyway, so I, whatever everybody thinks about that, I do like that last part about attracting and retaining, you know, our employees and contractors, so. Any thoughts around that, or do, do we leave it like it was, or with changes, or?
Your, your changes are fine.
Okay, okay. Then the three phases, I think you hit that right on the mark. The only thing is that, again, I took out that the, yeah, low income, and then just made it local. And then, yeah, phase, I think, I think it's a good point about phase three, evaluating the effectiveness, and then, you know, and then reassessing the future needs. I think that's good, really good. Okay? Time commitment? I didn't want to commit to every two to three weeks. I said monthly or as needed, if it's okay with my, my, that's fine, that's good, okay. And then, yeah, once it's been developed, the plans the committee will meet monthly. I think that's fine. And, yeah, everything was, I think that's good. Any other thoughts around our, before we get past, I went on to talk, anything else around our mission statement I should have asked before we move on? We added sustainability. Okay. There's some really good things in the ordinance. Maybe I'll take some of the wording out of that that talks about the fact that this is not a, you've got to protect this, this housing to be workforce housing, because you cannot let a developer come and say, oh, I get in all these grants and getting workforce housing, and then they build it, and then a year later, they start selling it, you know, the soon as somebody leaves out, they let anybody. So, that sustainability, if I can get some good wording on, we can pull from there to time the ordinance. Okay, and then, anything else about time commitment and duration? Do we, you know, the one thing, is there something in here about how long the committee members will be committed?
No. The process for that really rests with council, because any committee member can resign at any time.
Right.
But to be seated, you have to get council approval, so there is no term
Okay.
to your position.
Okay. And then, so then on the next part where you said, where we have the membership, it's, so at, any member who lives full-time, for active members, any member who lives full-time in the Village of Angel Fire is eligible to become an active member with approve, I meant to say approved by, with approval by village council, right?
Yes.
So.
Typically, how that works is the mayor nominates and council approves.
Okay, with, with nomination and approval. When I did put that in the next one, okay. And then, the same thing on the associate member. This would be the non-voting members, but, but they're also nominated and approved by council. Okay, so that was the only add there.
Another thing I do, do we have to have a minimum membership environment?
You, I mean, you have to have.
Say something like.
Three technically would be the minimum to have a, a quorum and officers, but most of our, there is no minimum. Some of them are four, some are five, some are six. It, it kind of depends on how many volunteers you find.
And then, do you want to put a maximum?
No, though we have informally told kind of all the committee chairs, like, if you have fifteen people, making a quorum gets much harder, so.
For getting an agreement.
Okay, so.
It's practical limits, you're not actual.
Yeah, three minimum at voting members, right? We need at least three. Hope that's not my car. I don't even know where my dang keys are, honest.
Whoever's in the FQ fifty.
Oh, it's Brett. It's in your rear.
I don't even know where my keys are. That's kind of sad. Yes, you're right. Okay.
Yeah, winter's coming. We now have five extra projects to lose my stuff.
All right, so then the, and then the members, we've got all that correct. Except my name. It's Rick Gitsen. All right, that's okay. Scope? And then, I really just said the committee will, will, will prepare related documents such as workforce ordinance, governance, promotional materials to be sent to village council for approval. The workforce committee is committed to maintaining transparency. I agree with that. We will ensure the new housing development utilizes local labor, and I said, not sure if we should include this one about using local labor. That's gonna be, what do you think from the council on that? What's your thoughts on that?
I don't know.
I mean, we, we want to, definitely. That was one of my first things I definitely wanted in.
I said whenever feasible.
Okay.
So.
We'll, we'll strive instead of ensure.
Right. Strive is probably.
I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a huge fan of that. I, you know, essentially, that's committing to, in some cases, if you have, you're basically saying we're gonna make the community poorer in order to try to use local labor, but.
So, so, part of that, for instance, like, we just approved a change order for more road rock that Treats is gonna put down. The contractor that has that award is an eagle nest. Is that local?
I think it is.
I, I would just say, again, that's kind of beyond the, the remit of the committee. I mean, it does get into sort of beggar thy neighbor policies. That's not, not really a road to prosperity.
Part of this is gathered up in the entirety of the RFP process. We have, we're going to have to send these out for bids, and more often than not, somebody who's local-ish to us is gonna be more interested in bidding work because they're here.
Right.
But there are some things that, you know, like the well we're gonna end up drilling down the back basin, there is not a local.
You have to go outside.
You have to go outside.
So, so, what I'm hearing is we probably should not include this. Because the, because we have to follow an RFP process, and so, and if nobody bids to RFP locally, then we can't, okay.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And then, then the, due to the immediate need for housing, the committee may use various types of housing, including when I, may recommend, I want to say recommend, recommend. Very types of housing, but not restricted to modular container mobile homes. I don't know about the container, what we've thought about before. I guess we.
You could, you could sum all that up with manufactured or side-built is probably the best way to sum that up.
Yeah, manufactured or side-built.
Okay.
Because really, side-built, if we can find the product and the person to do it, side-built's the way to go, because you're not transporting a eight, a hundred, twelve hundred square foot thing down the highway.
Right.
And I suspect any, any large-scale development will be side-built, but for right now, we're looking at the manufactured products, because it's what is most affordable.
Okay, we'll strike that, move that, okay? And then, the committee will recommend housing initiatives, developments and programs to benefit year-round residents. Residents. I wonder about that in thinking. I didn't mark it, but the committee may also consider a plan to, for rent-to-own housing opportunities. This is for the work, for the to benefit year-round workforce residents. Let's, let's add that word in here.
What, what do we get by adding the rent-to-own, other than a promise that council mayor may not follow, follow through on?
It just says that he may also consider, but we can take that out completely if we want. That one, the one developer came and talked about that for his announcement.
We know that to have a fully fleshed-out workforce housing environment here, you need some rentals and some units for sale. I suspect that the, the way we're going to get units for sale is likely the developer route. I don't see the village becoming a developer to sell modular units. I, I think that's probably outside of our scope a bit, but certainly finding a developer to partner with to do something is, we're definitely interested in that.
So, do we want to keep that sentence or strike that sentence?
Less is more.
Less is more.
Yeah, it's desirable, but I'm just, you know.
Yeah. Okay. And then the deliverables. Angel Fire Committee is to help create safe, stable, regular, planned housing with a goal of identifying a number of units to begin to address the shortage. That's what I said. Instead of specific a hundred units. I know that, that was kind of initial global putout, but any other, and then reassessing these, explore further developments. Does that sound okay? Is it too much, too little? Is that fine? Okay. And then, and then I, yeah, I did, I just turned it to our local force in the community who face, who, who face challenges in finding, not take that as space, who face challenges in finding local housing. And then the reporting plan is to give the committee, village council approval for all actions. So, I think, I mean, we've made some changes here. Is there anything that we felt like was not addressed that we didn't have? No? What I'd like to do too is maybe, if, how many of the other committees have started on this charter?
So, there was one, I think it was the, what I already started was the Parks and Rec and Trails Committee had a previous charter.
Okay.
So, they went ahead and updated it, and that's kind of what got the ball rolling on all this.
Okay.
I have two other committees that are working on their charters right now. None of them have been submitted, because we're well ahead of time here, so they are all being asked to, so that will bring the total to what? Six more?
Okay.
But.
I'm just thinking, like, once we get this kind of cleaned up, it would be good maybe to compare our draft to other committee, committee drafts.
They're same.
And kind of see if there's, if we feel like there's a gap in something that they've addressed that we need to address.
The, these, the purpose of this document is twofold. The first one is, is to keep focus on the committees. The committees head in the right direction. The second is, if, if at some point, you know, Lori gets tired of us and decides, bro, and I'm retiring from the committee, I'm out of here. What's a document that you can hand to somebody and say, this is our?
Okay.
This, this is the time commitment. This is what we're being asked to look at. Does this sound interesting to you?
Right, we like to spend time on this.
So, it's inward-facing and outward-facing, but that's, it doesn't need to be ten pages, right?
Right, right, no, and I was thinking, if we could get it to one page, that would be great, but you know, I think it's, or two pages is fine, so yeah, just something that's, you're right, because once you get too detailed, it gets, it becomes, okay.
So, maybe you do need to have a commitment of being reappointed every year.
We haven't got into that yet with any of the other committees. My understanding is right now, we have about sixty total volunteers spread across all of the committees, which is great. We need people out there working these problems, so I, I think that's something that may come at another time, but for right now, we haven't, haven't got there.
Okay, so unless anybody else has any additional input for that, we'll make those changes, and again, we'll come back to it, kind of review again, like we talked about the other one, okay? Anything?
Sometimes you want fresh blood.
All right, so the next thing is employee survey action items. So, you had one, and then I have one.
So, yeah, mine was based on my homework from last meeting. I went to manage your weir with the intent of going to our employees for the village internally and getting a survey response from them. What I learned, and what I talked to Matt about, and Matt and I kind of decided, rather than he and I just winging this, we would wait until this week and have this meeting. So, village employees do not all have email addresses.
Right.
So, the ask was that we not do this survey with them via email, but that we go the QR code route.
Okay, or just the URL route maybe even?
Um, I, I think we want to do the QR because we're going to post it all over in here. And we're going to give a sheet to each department head and make sure that all of your employees pull this out. So what we're after is basically making a third survey via the survey tool. That I will just call the internal village survey, essentially, so this does not need to be the full. However many questions the employee survey is, we don't need to get into, uh, questions of income here. Because all of those are things that would be sorted out, you know, by the manager, there's not a question of, you know, are you a subcontractor? This is meant for current and future village employees only.
So this is kind of like, how many family members, what size unit do you need, do you have pets?
The biggest question.
Do you even want to live here?
Exactly, would you, if there was a housing option for you in the village of Angel Fire, would you consider? Second question, what size of, how many bedrooms do you need? You know, what's your family situation, because what we're trying to get out of this, the, the biggest. Get from this entire process is how many three bedrooms, how many two bedrooms, and is there. A big demand for any single bedrooms? Once we have that number, we're then going to take and start laying out the dirt behind zeb's. With the floor plans that we have, both two-bedroom and three-bedroom. To figure out gaps, to figure out, okay, this is going to be forty units, it's going to be forty-two units, it's going to be thirty, we don't know, until we start laying it out. So we don't want this survey to be all-encompassing. Truthfully, if it was just one, two questions, would you live in it and how many bedrooms would you need? That would be probably sufficient, but we should probably clean it up a little bit. And so, my question of, when I called Matt, it was first, do you and I just want to do this? And we went, no, we have a meeting next week, we probably should just work it, so.
I was wondering if just the village wanted to do it because you want us involved in that, well.
Manager, it, it got punted back to, to us, essentially what happened, I, I asked for them to go do it and they boom around and get right back to you, so here it sits.
So, so, I think what I would be comfortable with is, you know, based on the input that you have from council and from. And from manager weir, is to get with Matt and pick the five or six questions that you feel like you need. You know, I mean, those questions, we all kind of vetted all those questions, but it's okay, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go adding, you know. Make sure any, if you add any questions that they're, you know, pair housing equal opportunity kind of approved, but.
Right.
But just if you take those questions that, and take the five or six and create like a third one. Then the only thing I don't know is about generating a URL, but I think there's probably, I mean, generating a QR code, I, I'm sure there's websites. That you could do that, and then, and then for this, I wouldn't want to create a fancy flyer or anything like that. Because I don't want him, I don't want the village employees then passing it out to anyone else.
This is.
Some kind of letter from manager weir or you or.
Correct, and, and it's going to go posted here at village hall, but it's also going to get handed to department heads. Because there's a streets department and a water department, they're not out in this building.
So that's fine.
So, so yeah, if you guys are okay with that, I think, Matt, if you're comfortable, I think you and I can probably pick. Our top three to five questions, generate QR code, hand it to manager weir and say, here you go, go get us answers.
Yeah, and so I, I mean, I'm, if, if, I'm okay with that, I, I don't feel like that's an issue to do that, I mean, that's the village. Can decide to do that for sure.
Okay.
Then I would say, um, the next action item though would be, so that's for the, the village, and so I think that's a good idea. Just get that, because that's the primary focus, and then, go ahead.
And it, it's going to get us to that next layout.
Right.
Which is the milestone to crank this project into engineering.
Right, right, and, and also I was thinking that it was a good idea for us to have a separation between. What we need specifically for the village versus what the village, the, everybody else needs, you know. So this would be a good way for us to say, okay, if this is your chance to answer to this, when we do the other one, don't answer that one.
Right.
But we'll put that, so, okay, that's fine, and then I think the other action items we have is, um. I have been meaning to do it today, I'll try to do it tomorrow, is I talked to Brett, he said, all we need to do, all I need to do is. He was going to get the information from Rocky to go ahead and do the approval for the funding for the marketing.
Yes.
And then we need to do that, uh, get a draft of the marketing materials.
Correct.
So, um, unless, if, does anybody have a real passion to go work with Caruso Creative to do that? If not, I'll do it, but if anybody wants to do it.
If that flyer looks ninety percent like the trash pickup flyer did, totally fine.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, add a little house, you know, maybe add a little house tonight, so.
Yeah.
So I will get with, I, so I'll take the action item to get with Brett tomorrow, because I'm leaving Thursday. If I'm not able to get to him tomorrow, which I should have time to do it, then I will send an email, ask somebody else to get with them.
And I am.
Maybe you to get with them.
I am still waiting, I took the homework on of getting with some of the employers in town, I have talked to several of them, I have not gotten responses from all of them yet, but I've. I've been promised some responses from several of them, so.
And then.
Working on mine as well, the owners of all those, I've nowhere to tell, isn't it?
Right.
So, we, we had said we were going to kind of extend that to the fifteenth, but if we still, you know, if we set another meeting to. You know, for our next meeting where we include, um, and an update, or on the final update. On the employer survey, I think that'd be a good idea, because then I would like at some point. Before the next, before a council meeting, for us to have, look over those results and prepare a summary to provide to council. So, um, but in the meantime, and I'll also send it, once we get the dollars approved, I'll send a note to Monica. And ask her to go ahead and draft something up for us, so that our next meeting will have something to look at for that.
True.
So action items is Jake and Matt are going to work on village, Elizabeth will work on funding and mark, for the marketing. And actual draft of the marketing, and then you guys are still whoever, Maya replied and said that the, that the. They had already responded, the village, the resort responded, so we still need. The view that you were contacting, the viewer you're contacting.
Working on that.
Okay.
Are you getting more people?
Yeah, I was going to ask that, did you get any more responses, Matt, do you remember?
Yeah, we had, um, quite a bit more, I actually sent you the, an update just before, uh, meeting started. Which I'm sure you guys haven't had a chance to look at, but, uh, basically, uh, the last one was two thousand and ten, so five years ago. Uh, or five years ago, five days ago. It tells you how long my, how many kids been, uh. And, um, let's see, I had it here somewhere, if I can find it. Yeah, so, uh, just give you some quick highlights, um, so. Total number of employee, of employed individuals, uh, in a year is one thousand two hundred and eighty-five. Um, about thirty-two percent of respondents provide housing. Uh, which I think is interesting, that's like a little bit higher than I thought. Six hundred and forty employees live in Angel Fire. Um, seventy-nine percent say that they have employees that are unable to find affordable housing. Um, that represents about three hundred and twenty-eight individuals.
That's a big number.
Yeah.
So it, it looks like, Matt, um, a couple of the responses that I was looking for, at least one of them was the hardware store that's down here. So they, they didn't respond to me, they just filled out survey, which is great, so.
So yeah, so we'll, we'll, what we'll do is, um, for our, we'll set the action items real quick for the next meeting in the time. And then we'll definitely go through those, that'd be kind of top priority, I think, is to look at the. Is, is to focus on the survey, the employer survey and the results of maybe the village one. And then kicking off the employee survey, does that sound good for? So when do we want to have that meeting, I mentioned I was not, I am out of town and, um, so the days that. If you want me to be here, if you need me to be here, which you don't, but if you want me to be here, um.
So, I believe the next council meeting is going to be on the twenty-ninth.
No, oh, okay, so I, I will not be here, because I don't think we'll be prepared for that, unless you guys want to have a meeting. I would just like to see the employer results before we present them to council.
So if you're not going to aim for the twenty-ninth, which totally get, um, the twelfth will be the next council meeting to be prepared for, so. Perhaps the week of the fourth bid.
Yes, so I will be here on.
You know, election week, there's not enough going on that week.
I'll be here the fourth and the fifth, and I'll be here on the eleventh, so those are the dates that, if we want to meet on the. Fourth or fifth, then let's do that, and then that, and then I could be here, and I am here for the eleventh and twelfth. I'm here from the eleventh, the thirteenth as well, so we could, our meeting for the fourth and fifth, and we can prepare. And I, and I can go give an update to the council, does that sound okay?
Yeah, I, I vote for the, the fourth.
Fourth, okay. Okay, fourth by thirty, okay, let's make sure that that's okay with Rocky and if it is, then, um. Then, so the agenda, we talked about, the agenda was review the employer survey, uh, discuss kickoff of the.
Employees.
Employee, and then also maybe review draft, if we have, if available, we'll review the draft, marketing materials.
And hopefully, we will have, if, if we can get, and if we're going to make a priority, hopefully we will have. Most of our responses from the internal village survey by then, and possibly a preliminary site layout.
Okay, internal, so I'm going to add renew, review employer survey results. Review internal village. Employee survey, I'm going to put in there, um. If available, in parentheses, that's one thing, we can skip that item if it doesn't happen, so it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
And then the marketing materials and kick them off.
One of the summer, I think.
Yeah.
We've got time.
We can come back to it again, we'll do a, we might just do another small work session.
For Thanksgiving.
Yeah, and then I'll, I'm, once I get home on the sixteenth, we're home till January third, so I'll be. I mean, sorry, once I get home on the twenty-first.
I don't think we're going to have to do much more to it.
Right, I think it'll be, it'll say.
I'll email Rocky tonight, see, see y'all, and, um, where our hoodie goes.
Well, I mean, I think with these things, that will fill up an hour, so maybe our next meeting will then focus on. These documents again, and, yeah, 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 okay, sounds good, all right. All good?
You.
Very mint. All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Right, thank you.
Hey, are you in town or are you leaving?
Me?
Yeah, I, I still got all, I got a pile of Stevie's stuff at my house.
Oh, yes, 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 uh, yeah, I'm in town for a little while, I will, um. I was listening closely to that second date, which we aren't going to do the eleventh, I'll be out of town by then, but I'll be in town.
Yeah, we did good, we really did.
Okay, well, if you are, if you're not going to around, I can meet you, I'll get you all Stevie's gear back.
Thank you so much, sorry about that.
Yeah, no, no worries, I just figured he's needed.
I was going to ask.
Take care, guys.
But yeah, I'd love to have them.